All right, according to my phone, it's 6:15, so I'll call the financing law meeting to order. It's Wednesday, April 15th. Mr. Fiore.
President.
And Mr. Souza.
Present.
First item on the agenda tonight is student activity requests. There aren't any. Second item is bid openings. We have bid openings for cafeteria supplies, produce, and cafeteria grease trap maintenance. So I'll turn that over to Mr. Cabral.
Thank you. Can you hear me, Mr. Martin? Sorry.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so again, Mrs. Martin here will not be joining us this evening. She's tending to a personal family matter. So I'll be opening the bids, okay?
That sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to open the bids. So I'll make that motion on behalf of the committee remotely that we authorize the superintendent who has the bids currently in hand, that we authorize him to open them and show us the bids and provide visual that there's a correct bid bond or a check with that and the proper signatures.
Mr. Fiore. I did.
All right, Mr. Souza, roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So go ahead, Mr. Cabral. You are authorized to open the bid.
Thank you. I have the official letter opener. So we have two bidders for produce. The first bidder is Frank Nassif or F. Nassif out of Florida, Massachusetts. Oh, Mr. Nassif or F. Nassif has provided a bid bond. So it's a treasures check. It's not a company check, so they are good. Looking next. They have completed the quarry document, so we can check that off. They have completed and signed the tax document, the tax affidavit. And they have also signed and have it notarized. The non collusion has been signed and notarized. Unfortunately, I cannot provide you with the cost. All they did was provide the mockup on the percentage, and they have the costs. We do not have a total cost, so we'll have to calculate that and bring that back.
That's all right. We usually do. At some point, we're going to refer this to administration for review.
So F. Nassif, they provided all the required documentation.
That's a good bid.
The next bidder is guaranteed fresh produce. They are located in Hyannis, Massachusetts.
And these are all time stamped when they come in, in case anyone had a question, right?
Correct. Mrs. Rebrick was actually working in the office today, so she was there all week to make sure that the bids were received in time stamped in a timely manner. So guaranteed fresh. They have provided a treasures check in the amount of $100. They have provided their mockup along with their cost. They've also provided some additional backup showing the cost, which looks like it comes off some labor market website. Signed Cory. Signs certification for taxes. And signs non collusion affidavit.
So that is a good bid.
Correct.
Why don't we, Mr. Souza, if you don't mind making a motion to refer that particular bid to administration for review and recommendation?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we refer the produce bids to the administration for recommendations and come back and let us know the results.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. On a roll call, Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
Souza.
Yes.
And I go yes also. And then I will go to the second bid, which is for grease trap.
We have one bidder for grease traps, and I believe if memory serves me, this is the Kermit vendor that we are using. And when we analyze the bid, we'll compare the costs to what we're currently paying and determine whether or not we need to go back out to bid.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that's always an issue with one bidder.
Right. But I know Mrs. Papar, I don't believe we've had any issues with Bay State Sewerage.
Ah, they're the current ones, yeah. They're definitely the current.
So we do have a, looks like a certified check.
Okay.
A tax affidavit. Tax affidavit is in order. Signed Cory. Verification form. They provided us with a total price of $1,157. I believe that's, and I believe that's monthly is what that would be. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Yes, it'd be monthly, $1,157 a month.
So that's, so that's a good bid.
Yep. One last document, sorry, and the non collusion.
Non collusion, yep.
Yep, so that's a good bid.
That's a good bid, and they have all their liabilities. Everything's in order.
All right, so Mr. Souza, maybe make the same motion?
Motion to send the administration, ask the administration for a recommendation on the bid and then come back to us with a recommendation.
Second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. So it takes care of bid openings. Next item on the agenda is bills payable in the amount of $1,186,077.3.
Mr. Chairman, I just had one question.
Go ahead, Mr. Souza.
Thank you. I don't know what you got there for documentation, Mr. Cabral. On page one, this one, this one that I don't really remember, and that was Amago, Amigo?
Amigo. I know about them because my wife used to do consulting work for them. They're a private school that deals with autism.
John, how many students is that? And where are they located?
Atlebar. I don't have the backup with all the detail, but Mr. Fiore is correct. It is a collaborative that we send students to.
Gotcha. I just don't remember seeing that before. It's funny, you know, most of the time I see the standard ones on there, so I'll know who's who and the amounts, but that one just seemed to be different.
Yeah, I don't think they have that many. They have a lot of adults there too, and not but Charlene was their part-time special ed director for a while until they changed their staff.
Gotcha.
I'm quite familiar with them.
Well, that's good, Mr. Fiore. That means that's a good place then. Hold on, Mr. Chairman, let me find the get down to the end of the, I have a second screen opened up here with the document on it, so I'm just going to get down to the end here because I want to make sure that the number, yeah, the number is the same in the front as it is at the bottom. Mr. Chairman, a motion that we pay the warrant as presented, $1,186,077.3.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. Fiore.
Quick comment?
Yes.
Mr. Cabral.
All right, just a quick comment for the public. Even though it's a $1.2 million warrant, only $218,000 hit the general fund. A majority of the costs were hitting grants, I believe $715,000 of the 1.2 is hitting grants, $218,000 is hitting the general funds, 125 is coming out of the lunch revolving account, 121 from federal grants, again, 715 from state and county grants, and then $5,000 out of revolving, just so you're aware.
Yeah, we like those kind of warrants.
All right, so again, the motion's made and seconded. Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Martin votes yes also. Last item on the agenda this evening, Mr. Cabral, you want to give us a facilities update, if there is one?
Yeah, but the only facility update that I would say at this time is the Letty Playground that the school committee authorized to furnish and install has been delivered and will be installed next week, so that's good news. That work will be done, and they'll be utilizing social distancing when installing the playground. I do not have any updates regarding the Mulcahy Project, so I apologize for no updates there. And just a couple of updates regarding the recent storm damage to two of our facilities in
Is everyone still here?
Still here.
All right. Yeah, I think, I think John had one of those unstable, there he is, unstable connections.
All right.
What was the last thing you heard?
You start with the storm damage again.
Okay, so we had some facility damage. The Kohanet, Del Turner High School, lost some metal flashing that wraps the top of the building. There was some damage there that we reported to the building department. I also learned that East Ton Elementary School, due to the storm and the high winds, lost substantial amount of shingles on the building. And also, we lost a tree at the high school. There's an area between the bus stop, the Gacha Bus Stop and the high school entrance is a section of trees. One of those trees was lost, and we sustained minor damage to the baseball facility. There was some damage to one of the dugouts, and there was a little bit of damage to the fencing that lines one of the dugouts. But all in all, we weathered the storm well.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I just have one question for Mr. Cabral. So on that issue, are we going to have the building department do a thorough look at the East Ton Elementary School roof again because that thing's on a wing and a bridge as every day, never mind during these bad storms?
Yeah, I haven't had a chance, so I haven't followed up with Mrs. Martin to speak to Mr. Ames and find out how substantial the damage was. The report I heard from Mr. Ames this morning that he said a substantial section of shingles was lost. So we'll find out and get a game plan from the city on what's being done to address that section of roof. In long term, we probably need to, I know we're not near the 30-year threshold, but I think it wouldn't hurt to put that building in through the MSBA for repair.
Which building are you talking, East Ton?
East Ton. That one seems to be the worst.
They were not, when they built the building, they didn't put 30-year shingles. They put 20-year shingles. 20-year, so you're beyond the lifespan of the shingles.
That's good to know.
Yeah, is that going to be, is that going to may need emergency repair?
I'll find out from Rick. I know under the previous building superintendent, they replaced large sections of roofing over there. I'll have to check with Mr. Ames to see what the plan is.
I think that was a 20-year roof and low bidder, and probably will last in about 10 years, and we're 20 years beyond that, I think. Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn financing law.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
And Mr. Martin votes yes also. Thank you.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Yes, Ms. Doherty.
Mike, do you have your mic on?
Oh, she hear it?
Yeah, she heard it. Yep.
Okay, Mr. Palowski?
Present.
Is that a, oh, okay, there he is.
Present.
Fiore?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mrs. Almeida?
Present.
Mr. DeMello?
Present.
Mr. Souza?
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Presence.
And would you like a reading of our prayer?
Yes.
Okay. Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for the opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes from March 25th and April 1st and April 8th.
Vote approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on a roll call vote.
Oh, okay, this is going to be a long night. Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Thank you. Superintendent's update?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I thought today would be a good opportunity to provide you with a summary of the conference call we had yesterday with Commissioner Riley and other officials from DESI, which is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And I do have members of the leadership team with us this evening who will give you a quick summary on E-Mark and some of the steps we have taken. And particularly, we'll give you a high-level overview of the rollout of our remote learning plan, and we'll talk about a couple of other issues that have been brought to our attention and how we're addressing them. So let's begin with the big question that I believe everyone is wondering, everyone's asking at home, and I'm sure school community members are asking, you know, what is the insight or what is the latest news regarding school closure? Will we be opening on May 4th, or will the closure be extended? So at this point, we've been told to sit and wait. We anticipate, what Commissioner Riley shared with us yesterday is he anticipates the governor either later this week or sometime early next week, providing additional guidance regarding whether or not we'll be opening up on May 4th as we are expecting, or if this closure will be extended beyond that. So until we hear from the governor, we're going to assume May 4th, but we are prepared for an extended closure as well, which Mr. Barata and the curriculum leaders have been working with our teachers to prepare for. Another topic that came up, and again, for those who are watching at home, and I think the news regarding COIL, this may impact the latest news regarding COIL. So there was this discussion regarding student registration. So as Taunton Public Schools, we are still registering students, believe it or not. Our principals have indicated that parents have contacted their schools to withdraw students, and parents have contacted our schools to register students. So when it comes to registering students, we have Mr. Barata, and he'll give a little update on that if we need to. But we are working with Carolyn Bleno, our technology director, to create a portal through School Brains that will allow parents to register new students pre-K through 12. So we're working on School Brains to create a registration portal for our preschool students, for our kindergarten students, as well as any student who is new to the Taunton Public Schools. So we'll be working on that. And I also wanted to mention that in the event that we do have students withdrawing, the questions that we'll be asking, or the main question we'll be asking our parents is if they plan to return in the fall. So if parents are calling to withdraw their child, if they are planning to return in the fall, we're not going to drop them. We'll continue to keep them on the books, but if people don't expect to return, then we are going to drop them or remove them from our list. And then if they do come back, then we will register them upon return. There was also new guidance regarding our English language learners, so we did share that with Mr. Barata and Delila Mendoza, who oversees our EL population. And the good news is we launched our remote learning guidelines today, so you may have received that in an all user email. If you haven't, I will forward it to the school committee at the conclusion of this meeting, as they were sent out early this evening, probably a little after 4, between 3 and 4, they were sent out. So Commissioner Riley did want to mention, and I'll share the report with you, that MIT has done an analysis of the remote learning plans or the online learning taking place throughout the country. And the good news is Massachusetts ranks number two as far as a remote learning plan, and I will share that information with you. So Commissioner Riley was proud of the work we have done. He likes the fact, or he emphasized the fact that it made sense for Massachusetts to go slow before we went fast, you know, to figure out what we were going to do and to provide everyone with an opportunity to put our remote learning plans together. Mr. Barata will talk a little bit about engagement. Again, we're only three days in, so it's hard to gauge engagement at this point, but we plan to have some updates or better numbers for you next week after we've been at this little more than three days. And I'll let Chris talk about that when we get to E-Mark. There was a tech survey that I participated in, as well as 191 other districts in the state, to gauge how many communities, so how many students have access to Wi-Fi, and how many students have access to devices. So across the state, about 9% of the student population does not have access to Wi-Fi, and about 20% does not have access to devices. So I take this as the state doing their due diligence to prepare in the event there was an extended closure this year, possibly beyond. So again, that's just them doing their due diligence. I will give a brief update on the F. Fiscal 21 budget. There was
I'm sorry, if I could just interrupt one moment. One of the members has a question on the withdrawal of students. Do you want to answer those at the end or now?
Um, I'll answer them now because I do have more information to go through.
Okay, so Mrs. Almeida, did you have a question? You're on mute. Just if you touch your spacebar.
There we go. Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, parents are going to withdraw their students now from school? Is there going to be a plan for them to do homeschooling, or is that what you mean? They're going to withdraw now for this school year or next school year?
This, this school year. Some parents have withdrawn their kids this school year. So the question that we're asking is Fiore, I think, talked about it last week. We had a case of a family that their mother is a parent, is a, you know, central employee, was working during the day and didn't have anyone to care for their kids, so she took their kids to New Hampshire. Well, she took her children to New Hampshire, but where there was daycare, but she plans to return in the fall. So in those cases, we're not going to take them off the books. But if people are withdrawing with the intention of relocating somewhere else and not returning, then we will remove them off our books.
Okay, so if they just withdraw to withdraw, isn't that responsibility to make sure that they have some kind of educational plan? Like we approve the homeschooling, or that's out the window?
Our responsibility would be to contact or notify the receiving district that the parent or the family has withdrawn and to make them register in their district. And then the receiving district would be responsible for educating.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Doherty, do you have a question also?
Yes, a question for clarification, Mr., through you, Madam Mayor, to John. Would you repeat those two data points in terms of Wi-Fi access and technology access? And is that, do we have Taunton data similar to that?
Um, so I'll stop and begin. So the state of Massachusetts issued a technology survey that I completed with Carolyn Bleno. There are over 300 districts in the state, 191 responded. Of the 191 that responded, it was determined that 9% of the student population does not have Wi-Fi access and 20% does not have access to a device. Chromebook, tablet, laptop would qualify as a device.
So that, if I might, Mayor, so that's a Massachusetts picture. What about Taunton? Do we have specific Taunton information?
We only did the survey on March 13th for middle school and high school students. So we would have that information for middle and high. We wouldn't have that information for elementary. So we could provide you with that, because I believe we do have it. I just have to get that information from Mrs. Bleno.
Yeah, that's important in terms of if we need to purchase more Chromebooks, for example. And just one more point, and it's in regard to Mrs. Almeida's comment. If parents are sending children to grandma's house in another community and have not enrolled their students in that school district, do we not have an obligation to have our planning in terms of remote learning follow those children?
Correct, yes. So even if a child, so a good example of that would be foreign exchange students. So the host of three foreign exchange students reached out to me. I'm sorry, my computer froze up. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the host parent for three foreign exchange students contacted me because she wanted, or she heard from the students that they want to be involved in our remote learning plan. So we have them connected with their teachers, participating in the remote learning plan from Germany, France, and I believe Italy. So even if they are for daycare, for whatever reasons, still on our books, but living in another community because of daycare or whatever reason, we are still providing them with education.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Cabral, I just want to review this one more time on this survey for the state. So are they talking about K through 12 is what the survey was as far as the technology goes? Now, did we give them, we didn't give them K through 12, we only gave them our middle school numbers? Did they have that broken up into two groups? How is that working? Because if this extends to the fall, we could need elementary school Chromebooks, et cetera.
Correct. So we, we, we used, well, let me back up. The survey was all guest estimates, to the best of our knowledge, because a lot of districts don't have that information at their fingertips. So utilizing, utilizing the information we received from the middle school and high school, which is roughly about the same size as the elementary school population, we did our best to guess, guesstimate that those figures would be pretty much the same for the elementary school.
That makes a lot of sense. So then you just double it. Yeah, that makes, that makes a lot of sense. Yeah, extrapolate the numbers as best you could tell. That's, that's great. So those numbers will move anyway. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay.
Going back to fiscal 21 and fiscal 20. So let me start with fiscal 20. So let me thank Mr. DeMello for sharing the information that's taken place at the university level as we've been utilizing that guidance. And I've been working with Mr. Martin, Mrs. Martin, a bookkeeper in our payroll department. So on the bookkeeping side, we went through the FY20 budget, and we unencumbered funds to get a rough idea on what we would have as far as the balance there. And the payroll side is also working on the payroll side to see what funds could be unencumbered to give us a true sense on where we stand for fiscal 20. Two of the things that I've done at the MASs during our calls with the commissioner is I've asked them to consider two things. Ability to pre-buy or pre-pay for FY21. So as Mr. Martin will remember, there are certain things that we can pre-pay and pre-buy. So we've asked DESI, and we've asked MASs to inquire from the state to see if they were moving those regulations to allow us to pre-pay for services or to pre-pay for supplies. The way my mind is operating right now, knowing that everything is on a back order, if we could pre-pay for our school supplies next year, knowing that everything's going to be on a back order, that will ensure that we have supplies to start when we open the school year. I'm comfortable and confident that we have enough supplies in the warehouse to get us started, so I feel good there. Also knowing that we have supplies in our buildings that are not being utilized now. So again, just looking to be able to pre-pay, pre-buy audio supplies, school supplies, curriculum, and then we're also allowed to pre-buy our cleaning supplies for the summer. So I don't anticipate buying a lot of supplies there, but again, trying to, trying to gauge where we are with our budget for fiscal 20. We've done, we've done the bookkeeping side, so now it's the payroll side that we're working on. And the other piece I want to mention too is we are allowed to pre-pay for collaborative tuition. We're allowed to pay for first quarter, which is June, July, and August. So again, those would be things that we would see and seek additional guidance from DESI and also a little more flexibility to be able, to be able to either carry those funds over and also a little more flexibility to be able, to be able to either carry those funds over or allow us to, to pre-pay or pre-buy some of those supplies. So that's something that we're, that I've inquired about in looking for additional guidance from the state. Regarding the outlook for fiscal '21, the conversation that I participated in yesterday, they started off by discussing the economists that I believe met on Tuesday, on that Tuesday morning, to provide the governor with a rough estimate on what they believe the revenue will be for fiscal '21 and also to discuss the curve or when they expect, when they expect the economy to pick up and when, when they expect the economy to get back to its normal level. So they talked about a U. So if the economy recovers like a U, it'll be slowing gradual. Or they talked about the economy recovering like a V, which would be a sharp drop and then a sharp increase. They talked about the recession or the impact, the economy recovering as early as the end of this calendar year or possibly as late as fiscal, fiscal '22 quarter four, which would almost be a year from now. And they did paint some different scenarios regarding loss of revenue. The good news is Massachusetts is in a very good position as far as their rainy day funds. I believe they're sitting on about $4 billion in the rainy day account, which also positions Massachusetts well to borrow money to make up any shortfalls. So additional discussion, which has me worried, is the initial figure released by the governor, which we saw an increase in chapter 70 of about 3.5 million. The question that we have, or most, since most superintendents had was, will that number hold true? Can we rely on that number to build our budget for fiscal '21? So that's why Mrs. Moynihan and I, when we work on fiscal '21 budget, we're looking over again to make sure that we can maintain the same level of services that we have currently in place with the $3.5 million increase, knowing that it'll be difficult for the city to contribute anything locally. If the state is suffering revenue at their level and that trickles down to the city as far as not having the revenue that the city would anticipate. So that is where we are as far as developing our fiscal '21 budget. And obviously, the timeline that they're talking about is May. And what was also discussed was instead of going through the traditional process of the governor to the House, to the Senate, and then back to the governor, they're talking about one budget that would be voted on to help expedite this process. So you wouldn't see the deliberation that, that you normally would see during a normal fiscal year. That was something that was discussed yesterday. They also talked about having this, they're hopeful to have this one. But again, there are still too many factors to, for them to play out, too many factors to play out for them to have a solid timeline at the state level. There was even discussion of the state operating on a 1/12 budget, which would be month to month until they get a clearer picture on what the fiscal situation looks like. There was some good news regarding the CARES Act, which is the 2.2 trillion dollar stimulus bill. We're hoping by April 24th that the state will get some guidance on how they're going to disperse the $215 million that they anticipate receiving in Massachusetts for education. So the $215 million, they plan on, they anticipate distributing that money similar to how they distribute Title I money, which is all based on low, free reduced lunch and low income. So Taunton should fare well as well as many urban communities. And there was also discussion regarding a stimulus four act, which Commissioner Riley described or discussed as being a bill that would help the state and communities replenish the revenue they anticipate. So again, everyone is working really hard. Everyone is just kind of at the beck and call of this virus until we can figure out what's going to happen with our fiscal situation. So we're planning for the worst case scenario, and again, we're planning to have the same level of services that we have in fiscal '20. So what that means is we may need to have a long, hard look and discussion regarding those budget priorities that we approved of fiscal '21. Budget priorities may be something that we may have to wait so that we can ensure that we have the same level of service based on that 3.5 million chapter 70 increase that we anticipate getting. So again, that's where my mind is right now, and obviously that's something that we'll discuss as, as a group.
Mr. Cabral, I just, I just have a question. Was, was the answer on the chapter 70 funding that is contained in the governor's budget that you can expect it to remain the same? Or was there not a clear answer on that?
I did not receive a clear answer. So the, we received, we received-
Oh, I think you froze up. Yeah, we can't hear you right now, Mr. Cabral.
That is in legislature.
Absolutely.
You hear me now?
Now we can. We didn't hear anything you just said, though.
All right, let me also, I'll back up from the beginning. So what was shared with us yesterday was that the economists that met in the legislature are going to start from scratch because the revenue projections that the governor used are not good, they're no longer valid because of the COVID-19 recession. So the receipts that they received through third quarter were on point. I believe the receipts that they received were 1.1% over what they expected, but we know quarter four, because of COVID-19, is going to take a huge dip, and that's going to impact projections for fiscal '21. So that's why they talked about using new projections and coming up with one budget to help expedite this process so that the economists can review all the different scenarios and try to give Governor Baker and his administration a solid figure to work with.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I agree that we all have to plan for a worst case scenario because I think we're all going to feel some cuts. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Stop talking.
I think Mr. Sousa had his hand up, and then Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Doherty, I see over there too. Mr. Cabral, so this is a tough situation because we really don't know where we're at and we probably won't know for a few more weeks. I know the legislature, the House, is in meeting at all in April to discuss the budget. So they're not going to start until May. So that, you're, you're, what they're telling you and then about the, about the one bill situation may actually be a fluid situation starting in May. So we really, we really won't have any numbers till sometime in the beginning of May. Is that reasonable? Are you ever getting any sense at all about how we can put some numbers together so you can, we can go over this with some validity at all?
Yeah, the question that we need answered, the question that Mrs. Moynihan and I are trying to get answered is can we rely on that 3.5 million chapter 70 increase? If we can rely on that 3.5 million chapter 70 increase, we can put a budget together for next year.
Would it be reasonable to say we won't have any hard numbers till the first week in May or sometime in early May?
Yeah, let me, let me find out and, and try to get a better timeline estimate from the commissioner and Jay Sullivan of DESI on what we can rely on as far as the timeline.
So as soon as we have information, we'll add that in as part of one of our meetings and on the agenda, so you can update the members on that. We're meeting every week. We might as well just throw that in and then a full presentation during a regular meeting, but at least we can keep the members updated on that.
Yeah, and obviously, we want to, we also want to save our reserves as much as possible. So knowing that our revolving account, that is, we want to make sure that we maintain a decent balance or a comfortable balance in our revolving account moving forward as well.
Yeah, I agree with you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you. Mr. DeMello was next, and Mr. Martin, Mrs. Doherty, and Mrs. Almeida.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Mr. Cabral. We understand that when we met as a school committee to discuss school committee priorities that were all based on assumptions such as the Student Opportunity Act and other parts of the budget. We know that we now have some additional funds that may come in through the CARES Act or other stimulus bills, but they're all unknowns. Do you think it would be wise to reconvene as a school committee to address budget priorities in a hypothetical scenario? I know I've been sharing, Mr. Cabral, it's no secret, I work in a public institution, so we're very transparent. And looking at FY '21, we have many models on hypotheticals. Of course, we also have beds to fill and, and, and food service contracts to commit to and so forth, so it's a little bit different, but the dynamics are the same. So if this COVID continues on and our class sizes have to be smaller, we need additional educators and so forth. So basically, hypothetical scenarios, is it wise to start talking about that now? I don't say today, but in the month of May and reevaluate those priorities? I have another follow-up to that.
Yeah, so what we were planning, what Mrs. Moynihan and I were working on prior to this happening and prior to this conference call yesterday, we were providing, we were going to provide you with different scenarios. We were going to provide you with a scenario based on 3.5 million, and then we were going to provide you with a scenario based on the city's contribution as well, which would be about five, which would bring the total to about 5.2 million and what we could do with that. So that would be the, so you'd have the extreme high end and then the minimum low end, and then from there, we can prioritize and see where the money comes and hopefully land somewhere in the middle versus here or below here. So yes, we can provide you with worst case scenario and worst case scenario.
And just a quick follow-up, is, is it prudent to even explore zero-based budgeting at this time or just build it from scratch? Or is that not even possible?
We typically build our budget from zero.
But I mean, again, forget, forget the 3.5 or any other dollars that may or may not come, just really thin line it. I mean, bottom of the barrel. Is that possible?
We could, or one of the things we could do is provide different scenarios of items that could be reduced. So in the event we had to go 500 deep, a million deep, 300 deep, Mr. Martin will remember, I mean, we used to do different scenarios where we could have level one cuts, level two cuts, a level three cuts. And obviously, where, and you can chime in and direct me as you'd like, I would look to make, or I would think we would look to make reductions that do not impact our classrooms. So if we were going to be reduction, we would look elsewhere outside our classrooms because obviously we want, we know that learning is being impacted by this. So we need to make sure we have as many teachers on the books, working with our students, reducing our class sizes or keeping our class sizes up to the level of where they are now. And obviously, it may mean some of our ancillary supports may, maybe, may be impacted for short-term. You know, as, as we recover, we can, as we've done in the past, build these things in. I will, I do want to earmark too, I do want to just err on the side of caution. The last time we did receive stimulus money back in 2008, the funds were earmarked for specific areas. So whatever's coming out of this $215 million from the federal government to the state of Massachusetts, I am sure it'll be probably earmarked towards regression, additional supports for students and whatnot. So I just want to, before we start thinking we might get two or three million, a couple hundred thousand dollars that we can spend discretionary, it may be earmarked and we have to spend it a certain way.
Sure. Mayor, just one last point, and I guess the, since, since we're not able to have our full staff on site and pull the numbers, that I'm looking at our FY '20 budget and will we be okay through June 30th in your best professional experience?
Yeah, based on our appropriation of 88 million, 88.2 million and the revenue that we have of about $5.6 million, we, and the numbers are fluid. As we start unencumbering things, we'll get a truer sense. So I believe between our revenue and our appropriation, that we'll, that we'll be able to live within our budget, especially as we begin to unencumber things. And as we unencumber things, it may free up what we have in revenue that we can carry forward to the following year. So as most businessmen, as most business managers do, they spend the appropriation first and we usually go over and then rely on our revenue to offset any deficit. And we want to, we want to hold on to our revenue moving forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This, this goes back to what Mr. Cabral started this conversation about budget, buying as much as we can out of FY '20's budget for FY '21 to help any potential shortfalls that FY '21 may, may, that may occur, which is what we're talking about. So the more we can get out of FY '20 for '21, the better we can reach our potential, you know, for what we want to do next year. So that goes back to what Mr. Cabral started with, getting DESI to approve us buying as much as possible in tuitions and, and supplies for FY '21 out of FY '20 money. And then if there is a shortfall, if we don't get the three and a half million, it won't be as bad as it could have been if we couldn't buy from this year's budget for next. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mrs. Doherty?
Yes, I have several questions, Mayor, if you'd indulge me. Would you first give an example of unencumbering funds specifics, a specific item that we encumbered funds to pay for and that you might look at to unencumber those funds?
Yeah, so, so for example, today, Mrs. Moynihan and I were looking at the, on the bookkeeping side, as I mentioned. So let's take, let's use electricity, for example. So for electricity, we encumber what we expect to pay for the entire fiscal year in electricity. So that number is encumbered. So what we did today, knowing that we have three months of no school, we, we know that our electric bill is not going to be as high as it was, especially when you think about the high school, which has air conditioning. So what we did is we looked at what we've expended to date, divided it by nine, and then multiplied by three to figure out what we have left to pay for the remainder of the year. So we reduced that number. So that number was, let's say we encumbered 200,000, we had 200,000 left on encumbrance for electricity. If we, the monthly average was 7,000 for electricity is what we spend as a district, we just took that 7,000 average, multiply by three, and we encumbered 21,000, and that freed up 180,000. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, yes.
Those are the types of things we're doing. There are still some big ticket items that we're not sure of. There's a lot of back and forth regarding how to treat the collaboratives. One, one week we're hearing, continue paying them. This, this afternoon, there's a listener question looking for guidance on whether or not to continue paying the collaboratives or to only pay them a percentage for the services that they're able to provide because students are not attending full-time. So again, if they're, if they're attending part-time, 50% of the time, or if they're engaged 60% of the time, then in theory, we should only be paying 60% of the tuition. So that's some of the debate that's taking place right now at the state level and that the guidance that we're looking for. And always with this, with the, in the back of our minds, knowing that we need our collaboratives to be there for us when we open. So we need to make sure that they have the resources, the funding they need to remain open so that we have a place to go to. So that, that's one, also, that's an example of unencumbering funds.
My second question, Mayor, has to do with the use of CARES funds. Is, to your knowledge, is that money targeted for the current fiscal year or the year coming, fiscal '21?
With the way they, the way they left it for us was summer. They talked about fiscal, it would be fiscal '21 because they were earmarking that money for summer school and also for next year.
Oh, interesting. So my next two questions have to do currently, at a meeting or two ago, we spoke about the bus contract and whether or not we continue to pay Bloom for that, for those services that we're not receiving. I believe that you indicated you would seek a legal opinion on that and have, do we have any idea what that is? Because it's a pretty substantial sum of money on an annual basis.
Great question. So one of the, what I did was I reached out to the four other districts. I utilize our vendor, and we are negotiating collectively with the vendor to determine what percentage of the fee we should be paying. So that's still ongoing. And the way it was with the five districts, one of the business managers has taken the lead and is working with our vendor, and the other, and the other business managers meet collectively and they discuss it, what's been going or what, what they're discussing as far as what's a reasonable rate to pay. One of the things we need to keep in mind is our vendor has laid off all their drivers.
Yes, you had indicated that, and it's not only in district transportation, but also out of district transportation and transportation of homeless students as well. So thank you for that, and I'm still working on that. And then the, the information that you provided regarding the data around technology, Wi-Fi access and technology access, hardware access, is important in this fiscal year in that if we continue through the end of the school year and not return to school, and as you say, the jury is still out on that, if our numbers of students who don't have access to technology mimic the state's numbers, then would you consider, are you, have you thought about purchasing additional- would you consider, are you, have you thought about purchasing additional Chromebooks, for example, for those students who may not have access to that technology?
Yeah, right now, we have sixty five hundred Chromebooks in the district. So that purchase that the school committee authorized last year has paid dividends this year. So in order for us to be one to one district, we would need about a fifteen, sixteen hundred Chromebooks, and we would be at a one to one level.
So is that something?
Again, I want to. A lot of it with, well, the way Commissioner Riley left it and the way Tom Scott left it was the state is working with the Comcast's, the Horizons and the Dells. So it looks like they may be working with those agencies or those businesses to identify resources for communities like us. And I would think would be either at no cost or at a reduced rate. So I know, I know, for example, in Kentucky, where my sister lives, her entire county has free Wi-Fi. By their, or their, I'm sorry, her community, her city has free Wi-Fi through their cable vendor. So I could see something like that. I would anticipate something like that replicating itself in Massachusetts, in other states. And then hopefully, if we're buying in bulk, we could get a reduced rate on buying and purchasing technology.
So it is our elementary, I'm sorry, it's our elementary students who don't have Chromebooks, it's middle and high school who do, is that?
It's, it's a combination because when we rolled out our remote learning plan, now based on the needs and based on what we learned about our middle school, high school and elementary students, we felt it would be best to go with a blended approach at the elementary level, knowing that many of our teachers and many of our students haven't used those platforms in the past. And most of the call emails that I've received that have been of concern have come from the elementary level where parents are learning, or kids are learning, or struggling to learn how to use devices. So the paper packets have worked well, and at the middle and high school, it really seems to be, to be working really well. And when we get into EMOC, I'll let Mr. Barata talk about the launch of our remote learning plan. And I'll let him talk about it when we get there.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mrs. Almeida and then Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Cabral. I know that we've discussed a little bit of this, but my question to you would be, now there were some new positions that we were, we had approved to go on to hire. Are we going to continue filling positions or are we going to put a freeze on our positions until we can figure out what's going on?
Yeah, we, we put a freeze on any new hires right now.
Okay, so the positions that were posted, they have not been filled?
Only one position, we made a recommendation to fill, but we held off because that person serves a very vital role in our district, in the technology department. So we haven't moved that person over to the new position because we need them where they are now.
What position was that?
That was the additional payroll assistant slash bookkeeper that the school committee authorized last year.
Didn't we do?
We do have. And then the other positions, the guidance chairs, we've only started interviewing. We have not, there were no recommendations to appoint on those positions.
Okay, that, that's the ones I'm talking about. So those should be on hold for now, right?
Yeah, I mean, those are on hold, and those are going to get posted at the end of the year anyway. So we'll, we'll hold those off and see where, where we look, where we look, what we look like on July first.
Okay. Well, I'm going back before Mr. Martin, when the school committee actually did the budget and brought it to the council and they had to set the tax rate based on what the school committee brought them before two and a half went into effect.
Just a few years ago.
Yeah, just a few years ago, Mr. Martin. But I think that what you're doing is, is good as far as looking at all those things. But I, I wouldn't want to see anything new put on the budget. And I think that we really need to take a hard look. And I would ask you to take a hard look at what we need to cut from the budget that we have to make up. Because if you, if you lose that three point five million dollars from the state and the budget isn't what it's going to be, we're going to lose even more money. We need to look at making some hard decisions on some programs that we may have that are not direct services to, to kids.
Yeah, what I can't say now, Mrs. Almeida, is that, and again, I haven't looked at it in depth. Mrs. Martin did send me a budget to review that is balanced based on the three point five, chapter seventy increase. So I have to take a look at it again in depth before I feel comfortable, or because I may have questions before we share it with you at a later date. But again, we will take a look at it, and unfortunately, we need to make some difficult decisions. And again, no one enjoys making difficult decisions. We don't get in this line because we enjoy, we do that. We like to talk about the great things that we do and how we utilize these resources to better our students and to better our district. But unfortunately, this is something we don't have control for. And my number one priority has always been, has always been, as a business manager now, as a superintendent, is to keep the positions we have in the system in place.
I agree.
Thank you.
I agree, but there might be programs that we need to look at to.
Or there may, there may be some positions outside of the classroom that we could take a long hard look at as well.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Cabral, just a couple of observations, and one of them is the Chromebooks, even though we have, even though students have access to technology at home, maybe laptops and things like that, I think in the long run, it just continues a real long time. The hard look would be Chromebooks, especially in the elementary school, to fill them for every student. Because that gives consistency as far as a student, what they're, what they have at school is what they're going to have at home. Rather than a student logging in with a laptop and things like that. I know you're, you're working on that, and I know you agree. I just wanted to emphasize that one more time. And I have a, I have a second question. And the second question is, as far as the transportation, I know we're negotiating with other districts. Are we also reviewing with legal counsel, reviewing with legal counsel the actual minimum amount we have to pay on the written contract that we have with them? Plus, as far as the negotiation goes, in other words, we want to make sure we do it within the legal bounds of the contract as well.
So what Desi has provided, or Jay Sullivan has provided, is a boilerplate or a template to use as a contract in addition to what we have now, that would only be for this fiscal year. And then so that, and I already spoke with Attorney Gay today on a couple matters, and this was one of them, that once we get that template or once we figure out what the figure is that, what we've settled on, then we will bring it to Attorney Gay for review, then obviously I'll bring it to the school committee for your review as well. And then, because obviously we need to make sure that it's, that the auditor understands that it's been reviewed, that we continue to be transportation provider, but at a reduced rate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Cabral.
You're welcome. So, Mr. Cabral, are you continuing on or are you done with your?
We have one last item, two last, two final items, Madam Mayor. So regarding MCAS, so the commissioner did cancel MCAS for this year. It took a while, it took longer than expected because he had to apply to the federal government for relief on MCAS. And then once the federal government provided relief, then it had to go to the state. It actually took a little, little longer at the state level than it did at the federal level, a little surprising. So what the commissioner has said is no MCAS this year. He said, even if we come back, no MCAS. He feels that that time would be best spent on teaching and learning and getting the kids back into their normal routine. Good news regarding our seniors and the MCAS. So our seniors did have a chance for the MCAS retake. So what the commissioner did say is, that he's going to focus all their time and effort when it comes to the MCAS on the seniors. Making sure that seniors have opportunities to retake that test so that they can graduate with their, with their peers. So they, we should be getting the retest results soon. And then once we get the retest results, well, the state will be providing guidance on summer retakes. But that will depend on the governor's announcement on when we return or if we return. It'll also depend on the test maker's ability to produce the tests. And it'll also be dependent on our ability to administer the test, depending if there's guidance regarding social distancing. So again, the focus will be on the seniors when it comes to MCAS, not on the lower grades. And I believe one question that did come up was regarding MCAS twenty twenty one. There's been no discussion regarding MCAS twenty twenty one yet. Again, the focus is this year, and I already discussed budget items. So I'm just going to go quickly over EMOC. And Mr. Barata, can you give an elevator, elevator speech on education, launch of the remote learning plan, please?
Absolutely. I apologize, last week I actually kept notes and I didn't go through them and I felt terrible being a week off. And one of the first things that I wrote down was no MCAS, and obviously Mr. Cabral already talked about that, I'll scratch that off. We launched our remote learning plan this past Monday. For the K seven or K four environment, they continued with the packets which were distributed on April first. And teachers were logging in, connecting with students based upon that work. In the meantime, curriculum coordinators, the coaches and teachers weighed in on the development of this week's packet, which will be distributed at all school sites this Friday, and students are expected to be in work on that Tuesday. So we'll make an announcement. Mr. Cabral is going to make a robo-call alerting families of K through four that the new packets will be distributed this Friday at the school sites and that students were expected to begin to work on those next Tuesday after the Patriots Day holiday. At the high school level, they continue to work very well, connecting with students, not only with the classrooms, but also more importantly with guidance. We talked earlier, or Mr. Cabral mentioned about engagement and what does that look like? We had a conversation with all the principals on Wednesday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, about dipsticking with your staff members of what is the level engagement? And there was a lot of questions of what does engagement mean? Because we've shifted now from making initial contact and making sure all families and students are fine. And Mrs. Perry's got some phenomenal numbers to discuss with that. And based upon that numbers, we can only assume that the level engagement will be relatively, how should I say this, acceptable moving forward. And the reason why I say acceptable is I'm a part of an assistant superintendent's cohort. And on Monday, we, we met and it's assistant superintendents from other urban areas to more affluent areas. And one of the discussions or the major focus of discussion was, how are you doing with the COVID crisis dealing with school and education? And to a T, every district that participated, every member participated, talked about their remote learning plan. And I was very, I really wanted to listen to what they had to say, comparing where we were versus where they were. Our strengths preceded what their strengths were, and we are right there with everyone else. So as much as we may think, hey, what's going on in this town here? Are we a little bit behind? Are we here? We're really smack dab in the middle. And most importantly, when it comes to engagement, this individual from a well-off town, who primarily has been one-to-one environment from the get-go. When they rolled out the remote learning plan three weeks ago, they stated that their engagement levels was high teens, low twenties. Which, which really is telling, given the fact that you would automatically assume that that would fall into play. I would like to think that our engagement is going to be much higher because again, as Mrs. Perry talks about the numbers that we have about connections, it should be up high and we'll continue to monitor, and we have already mechanisms in place where we have staff members beyond the classroom teacher continuing to follow up with those students who may not be engaged, finding out why and what can we do. So that also goes to Kathy Perry's operations components. How are we going to track down those students or what supports we need to give them? So that is the ten thousand foot view of the, the remote learning plan. Want to mention, we, last week I talked about professional development opportunities that we presented for educational assistance. That was dealing with the May Institute in conjunction with the University of Connecticut on the PBIS, the Positive Behavioral Intervention Systems. It's a five-week series of workshops. Each week has its own theme, and it offers staff members three different days and times in which to participate. Yesterday, we had forty seven members take part, today forty one, total of eighty eight. We have another session this week. I, I listened to the first, actually I participated in the first session, very engaging. Our assistants were very excited to be in there. I was reading the chats about how positive it was. There was some online polling taking place. They were very much engaged. Afterwards, the feedback was great, so much so, and I think it's a credit to our staff and how taunted it is and how you as a school committee model this behavior. Before logging off, the assistants were, were chattering back and forth. Hi, how you doing? How are you? I miss you. You know, I'll talk to you, I'll talk to you. It almost became their almost therapy session because they were able to see one another. And that goes to not only how staff is connected to one another, but also when you look at how it goes in the buildings, how staff are connected with children. So I think it was a great opportunity. The feedback is positive. Next week, I'll give you more conclusive data about the participation and, and their feedbacks. I asked for them to provide me the feedback, good, better and different. Mr. Cabral mentioned about kindergarten registration. We're ready to go with a paper and pencil. We've had seven hundred packets sitting over the family welcomes that are ready to go. But we're also thinking about being smarter moving forward. We do have access to School Brains in that portal. And in, in past years, what we do is parents would fill out those packets. We'd have them come face to face, bring their documentation, proof of residency, birth certificates with the raised seals and such. We can't displace that, but we can with the packets because online, it'll be a direct insertion of data from the families themselves. What happens before was they fill out the packets, then our staff, guidance counselors, IT department would then take that information and input it directly themselves. Obviously, the more times you transfer information, things are lost, you know, numbers are superimposed on one another and the information is wrong. We're really going to look at moving this forward, maybe a two-step process where we have paperwork only and then also online. But then eventually, we're going to have to have face to face with that documentation. So that's a work in progress, but it's actually something that once we get it right and launch it, I think it's going to be fantastic. Again, the K four packets going out this Friday, the theme is it's alive. So science, looking at the science standards has to do with all living things, history. We looked at how do we make history alive? Students are developing time capsules. It's difficult to work with it's alive with mathematics. But Tina Rogers and the coaches did a lot of activities around the house with making math alive and real. So we're really looking forward for that launch of packets. Again, thank you so much for the coordinators, the instructional coaches and the teachers that they dip stack out and said what works, what doesn't work. We've also set up files Monday where teachers can download and modify that, the work. So even our EL students and special ed students can access. So kudos to them. It'll be a good first week and we'll be able to report out how that goes moving forward. And again, last week's information that I neglected to say, I apologize. Last week, the high school held a virtual or a remote learning meeting with thirty of the National Honor Society students. They've also set up now for seniors and parents and guardians, Google meetings, Tuesdays, two P M. And Wednesday night, seven P M. For any students and family members who want to connect with guidance, they've got the codes, they're passing information out through Naviance and through the through School Brains for the parents accounts because sometimes the Naviance only goes to the student only. And what they found out was sometimes students aren't letting their families know or parents or guardians know that this is going on. So the high school went around their ways so the parents know as well. So they continue to reach out. The scholarships. Again, the seniors have been notified through Naviance and through other ways. They're very much telling the students, look, regardless of the deadline, fill out the scholarships. Okay, fill out the scholarships. They're there where they work for you. And the, and the, the, the annual contributors of that have been very receptive during these hard times to contribute for those scholarships. And the high school, you know, framed a very nice letter, understanding that times are tough and maybe this year, some companies or families may not be able to donate as much as they once did, but they're working forward, looking forward to do that. The last thing I'd like to say, and it sort of goes into Kathy Perry's domain, but we were meeting with Principal Delaney this morning. He was picking up some Chromebooks for some of his students. Again, they're just students, they're all ours, no matter where they are. I picked up some Chromebooks. Today, they hosted for seventy students, almost an SEL, what you almost want to say, a building-wide assembly for seventy students. The other students who couldn't participate and sign up are getting those Chromebooks today. So that was hosted by Mr. Delaney, Mr. Brennan, the adjustment counselor, the truancy worker and guidance counselors based upon SEL. How are you doing? How can we help you and such? And I think that's phenomenal. So that's it, Mr. Cabral. If you have any questions, I'd be willing to answer.
Mr. Martin has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Barata, if you would pass on to the headmaster of the high school, the PACC scholarships would do, I'd do this coming Friday, but obviously that's not going to happen. So basically, there's, there's no deadline on them. I do this coming Friday, but obviously that's not going to happen. So basically there's there's no deadline on them.
So thank you, Mr. Barata. And I just want to pick you back on Mr. Barata.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cabral, if I may interrupt, Mrs. Doherty also had a question.
Like you might.
You're on mute, Mrs. Doherty.
Still on.
The distribution of the packets for the K four kids. Last time we talked about this, they were being distributed at the same time the lunches were being distributed. What about those kiddos who aren't picking up lunches? Their families aren't picking up lunches? How is that getting distributed?
Well, what we found.
Packages on our website, so parents can access the packets on our website and print them off that way. And parents, and we also have them available at the schools in the event that parents cannot pick them up at the sites as well or print them off.
And parents are aware of that. Teachers are informing them that.
Well, um, yes, and this part, it's going to be part of my robo call that I'm sending out tomorrow as well.
And it occurs to me that as you're talking about these large group virtual meetings. There are families, parents who may benefit from coming together to talk among themselves about, much like a support group, about how it's going and sharing ideas about how they're managing the students and schooling during this difficult time. So I would imagine that would be up to a teacher. Your plan requires office hours and meetings and contact, so it might be a good idea. I don't know if it comes up in your conversations with teachers, but to suggest perhaps if that's what parents are looking for, they might be able to do that.
Well, during that conversation, I mentioned with the other assistant superintendents, what other areas have done is their PTOs have hosted their own meetings to check in with one another. And maybe that's something that I push out to the principals and say, you know, talk to your leaders of your PTOs and PTGs, maybe they want to host those meetings.
Yeah, good idea. Thank you. Thank, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Pulaski, did you have a question? Or comment?
I have a, I have a few questions if you would indulge me, Madam Mayor. Thank you. So first question is, and all of these are in regards to remote learning and kind of feedback that I've been getting from families over the week. So the first question I have is in regards to remote learning. Do we have set schedules for each school that teachers are all meant to follow? Or are the teachers allowed to set their own schedules as best to accommodate their students?
Yeah, the only school that has the set schedule is the high school. The high schools follow in their block schedule. The other schools have been creating their schedules and sharing them with their students and families.
Thank you. But next question I have is, and so we're doing a great job with the remote learning, so kudos to you and and the whole staff. My question is more towards like some of the more, I guess, specialty items. So for instance, students that had internships. Students that are in classes like culinary and woodshop and AutoCAD. Do we have plans for those? Because I can't imagine that those things are as easily handled through, you know, remote learning and Google Classroom. So do we have specific plans for those more difficult?
Yeah, let, we're going to need some time. I can't answer that off the top of my head, Mr. Pulaski, but if you'd like. We can bring some information regarding those type of specialty courses. As far as what they're doing with the students remotely. I know Mrs. Gibson has posted some stuff on Twitter regarding different recipes that she's encouraging kids to participate in and to take advantage of. I know Mrs. Hartong has also shared some stuff as well. But we can give you an example of what a specialty course and how they're engaging the kids remotely.
And Mr. Mr. Cabral is bombarded with emails and I see the same. DESI has actually sent out advisories to CTE directors and such, how to do it during the remote learning process. And again, Ms. Hartong, Ms. Repose, and all that area up there is very tied in with DESI because a lot of, or I should say, they receive a lot of grant funding. So they do get a lot of guidance to how to support learning during this time. And as Mr. Cabral said, we can get that information for you.
I also do have a meeting with the AVT, AVTE Coalition, which oversees, which advocates voc tech education. I do have a meeting with them coming up in the near future.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. What I'll do is I'll probably follow up with an email with the specific questions that I had to to make sure they all get addressed. So thank you very much. My next, and I two, two more, two more questions. Thank you. The next is so we received the letter from CPAC earlier this week. I was wondering, are we going to collectively discuss it? And perhaps put together a response?
Actually, Mrs. Mrs. Mulrooney is not on tonight. I usually don't have the full leadership team on during school community meetings. But she can do this better justice than I can next week. So Mrs. Mulrooney. Mrs. Mullin and Mrs. Moynihan, Amy Moynihan, met with members of the CPAC yesterday at 1:30. They addressed the concerns in the letter, which I believe the letter was written on April 2nd and we received it on the 13th. So I believe many of the concerns in the letter were already addressed. But I may be with dates, but I know Mrs. Mrs. Mulrooney sent me an overview of some of the key points they discussed. So they did talk about the timelines and the IEPs and the guidance that we received from DESI is that the IEPs are frozen until we return back to schools. And remote evaluations is not an option at this point. And again, that's coming from DESI. And DESI is running this by the US Department of Education as well. So this is how it's all trickling down to us. They did discuss a remote team meeting, so we're in the process of developing protocols to host remote team meetings, the annual team meetings, or for in for transition only. There was also discussion and clarification regarding office hours. Part of our remote learning plan, we emphasized with the TEA, the impact bargaining, that we realize our special educators are going to be spending more time with their caseload than our traditional regular education teachers. That was built into our plan. So that was discussed with the CPAC parents so that they had a clearer understanding. A couple other points, they clarified the three and a half hours of teaching of learning is flexible and based on the needs of the students. So we understand that some of our special needs students, three and a half hours may be too much, or three and a half hours might not be enough. So that was discussed as well. Mrs. Mulrooney reminded them that they have specific questions, concerns, thought with the building principal, which is what we've been asking everyone to do, including school committee members. If you get concerns or parents reach out to you, refer them to the building principal. And then the last, two last pieces, the last piece was Mrs. Mulrooney is going to be working with the CPAC to provide them with some training videos on how to use Chromebooks. So she had a healthy meeting and I believe all their concerns were addressed. I'll have her follow up with the committee when we meet next week on our COVID-19 update.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And my last item. So I want to know, are we going to come up with a mechanism to get feedback from students and parents regarding remote learning? And I wonder, would we consider doing like a Google Forms survey?
I missed the last part of that.
Sorry. I wonder, would we consider doing a Google Form survey? And if it would be helpful and if it would please the committee, I'd be willing to make a motion to put something like that in in play because I've got some ideas on that.
And what what information would you be looking to collect?
So I I got basically a
You're muted, Mr. Pulaski.
Okay, sorry about that. So I've got six questions that I put together. This is based on some feedback that I've been getting. So basically the first question would be a dropdown menu. Are you a parent or student filling it out? Second question would be a dropdown menu on the grade level. And then the main questions would be, what about TPS? Remote learning is working well for you? What about TPS? Remote learning is not working well for you or could be improved? Is there anything that you're confused or worried about? And then finally, does your student spend too much time, not enough, or just the right amount of time doing schoolwork? You know, something along those lines. I feel like that kind of feedback would be helpful to us going forward. So I wonder, is there an appropriate mechanism for getting that out there?
Well, how about, well, we have one, we do have a joint labor management committee meeting coming up on Friday with the TEA to determine or to assess how the remote learning plan is working from the administrator perspective as well as the teacher perspective. So we're looking to identify any hiccups or any bumps in the road that we need to work out with our teachers. And I would say, based on day three. I've only had a handful of, I've had maybe two or three emails that have been sent my way from parents who were concerned. And then once we had a chance to speak with them, they understood what we're trying to do and were able to provide them clarification. So that's something that, if that's something the committee wishes us to do, that's something we we can do.
Mr. Souza has a question. If you're all set, Mr. Pulanski.
Um, yeah, I'm all set. So I guess I like the idea that we have a plan to get feedback from teachers and administrators. But I feel that in parallel, we need to get the same feedback from our parents and students because, I mean, at the end of the day, the the students are really the the focus and and our our customers, if you will. So I'd like to be able to get broad-spread, honest and accurate feedback from them. So I mean, I'm I'm willing to consider whatever the collectively the group thinks is best. Thank you. And I'm done after that. Thank you.
Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Although I think it's an admirable idea. I certainly think we're in the infancy of remote learning here in the district. And I think we got a lot of growing pains that are going to take place. And I certainly think the best approach is to take it at the building level. So if in continue to push back on the on the principals, then we'll then talk to the teachers. As far as the survey goes right now, I think it's way too early and it just drags on because it's going to drag on. There's no question in my, at least this person's mind, and it's going to drag on. Well. We can see then if that that's necessary, but I think it's certainly something to look at, but not right now, maybe in the next month, maybe, or something like that. If 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 things continue and and we still hear things going on that people have concerns. But I I think it's, I think it's too early right now. Thank you.
Souza, Mrs. Doherty, did you have a question?
I have a comment. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually, I support both points of view because it has occurred to me that the collection of data in terms of where we started and where we're going with the plan for future reference, I I think that much like the healthcare system, we are discovering many strengths and weaknesses in the system. And I think that we're going to find many strengths in our plan and some weaknesses. And so that kind of data collection to inform how we go forward in terms of looking at K-12 education for me would be really valuable. I mean, we could start here making a motion, Mr. Pulaski could make a motion that we pursue the design of a survey. And then we can decide when, together, when that should be implemented in terms of the experiences of our students, teachers and families as well. I just think that information would be very valuable for us. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Souza.
Just to follow up on that, I won't belabor the point, but also too, as any survey that we've had, I've also seen the results be skewed. Because we know the people that we're looking for that aren't getting the good services, I'm filling out the results. So that's another problem that we have. Do we have accurate data? And not necessarily the data could be accurate. Especially if we have a small, a small population that's filling out, or we could have a skewed population that's just filling it out. So we've got to look at the data. And I have a problem doing it, just that really is the data accurate? That's key when you get down to the nitty-gritty.
Thank you, Mrs. Souza. Mrs. Almeida, you're next, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, I think a survey is great, but I don't think we have, the parents have had enough time to evaluate what's being done. I mean, this just got rolled out this week. I think we need to give it a couple of weeks before we send out any kind of survey so they can effectively answer, you know, intelligently. I mean, at this point. You know, a couple of days doesn't give you enough time to to understand what's actually going on. So I think that I would support it, but I think we need to wait at least a couple of weeks to do something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with the week of the 27th or the May 1st, which is a Friday, makes sense to roll out a survey because that would give us three weeks of remote learning. And that'll allow us to get feedback from our teachers and administrators.
I like that.
I can't make motions, so.
Oh, I don't really think we need to make a motion if you're going to do it, Mr. Cabral.
Yeah, why not? Chris, you're making a survey.
All right.
That was easy.
Are we making a motion or are we just moving on?
We'll, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
Mr. Pulaski, send me your thoughts and ideas, please. And then real quick, I'm going to have Mrs. Perry talk about meals and operations. Mrs. Perry, can you just focus on, because this has gone a little longer than I expected, if you just focus on our outreach work, which I'm very, very proud of.
Sure. So, you know, I was thinking what a difference a week makes. And in talking to parents, which I have had the pleasure to talk to probably over 100 parents, I would say in the past few weeks, and it's just been such a great opportunity. And I feel, Mr. Pulaski, to your point. So many parents seemed nervous about a lot of things. And then as time went on, it makes such, a week makes such a difference, I feel like in this. And as we were talking, I had a smile on my face because I just, one of the parents reached out to me on Facebook and you know, said to me, you know, she was so very, very nervous and not feeling confident in her ability to be able to do all this and just kind of reached out and was really feeling a lot better tonight. So I do look forward to that survey. But to speak to the outreach, it's been tremendous. So we are down right now to 20 students. I can tell you that there are two at the elementary level, seven at the middle school level and 21 at the high school level. So we've done just the teachers, the staff, I myself have made many phone calls. And I think to provide a little clarification to Mrs. Almeida's point about students going to different places. It just so happened that three of the families I spoke to were in different towns. One had gone to Fall River. He had to have his children. He had to have his parents watch them in Fall River. So that was two of the students. I had another family that went to Abington, ended up speaking to the grandparents. And I think it speaks that a lot of these parents are working. And they've got to be able to have a place for their kids. And then another was in Avon. So we've provided the work for them at the elementary level. I mailed out packets for them. And so at first, they weren't answering. We weren't able to contact them, but I think now things have started to settle a little bit. So we're not going to stop with the 20. We're going to keep on working to continue to reach out to them. I've talked to SRO Peterson and he is going to do some home visits just to make sure that people are actually still still there. Particularly the two at the elementary level. But it's, it's really been quite a great, a great accomplishment. I can tell you, two of the houses at the high school have 100%. One has 15 that we're still looking to contact and one has six. So that's the total 21 over at the high school. So all in all, I think what has happened as a result of that, though, is we have been able to provide more Chromebooks to those students. So as the outreach took place, we realized that they needed Chromebooks. So for the past week, I've been at Cole School. Mr. Mattos has been at the high school and we've been able to provide them with the technology that that they've needed. So overall, we're really pleased with that. We're going to continue working for those 20 more students.
Thank you, Mrs. Perry. And then I'll just conclude with communications and then give an op, give another operations update. So as far as communications, we've, we've done, we did a PSA that went out last week that introduced the remote learning plan. Something new that I'm doing to engage our younger population. And this was a brainchild of Hector Apanti, who's part of DECA and part of the high school advisory. So every Saturday, Hector is hosting an interview. So far, I've been his only guest, but we'd like to introduce some other guests in the community. Maybe our mayor, hint, hint, can be a guest on Hector's show.
I would be happy to.
If you all, I'll reach out to you shortly. So that's one way where we're trying to connect with the younger population in Taunton. And Hector's been bringing a lot of questions from his peers at the high school that we've been able to answer. I've been able to answer and provide some clarity. So we'll continue to do that. We will do, continue on our robo calls and our communications. So again, we want to make sure that our parents receive concise, consistent information regarding throughout this pandemic. Then the only last piece that I want to to be a question, this falls on the operation. And I did get an update from Mr. Barata regarding EF Tours. And I did speak to Attorney Gates today and share this information with him. So EF Tours has extended their deadline to cancel to May 15th. And they've reduced the penalty if someone cancels prior to May 15th. So instead of losing $1,000 or $755. So instead of losing a thousand or $755, now if anyone cancels, they would lose $500 uh is what they would lose out of pocket. So I did share that information with Attorney Gay. The deadline for them to respond to Attorney Gay was April 10th. Attorney Gay is gonna be reaching out to them tomorrow. And he did say that $500 is a good start. And he will reach out to them and continue to keep me informed on uh his negotiations, on his discussions with EF Tours. And with that, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral.
Motion that we accept the report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on a roll call vote. Mrs. Fagan.
Mrs. Doherty? Oh, wait a minute. Yes. Oh, oh, sorry. Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza? Was he a yes? Oh, okay.
Yes.
He's frozen.
Am I frozen? Yes.
And Mayor O'Connell, I don't believe you have to vote on this. It's not a tie or anything. So that's all set.
Okay, thank you. Uh, subcommittee reports, and the motion passes. Subcommittee reports, finance, uh, finance and law subcommittee, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Finance and law met earlier this evening with myself, Mr. Souza and Mr. Fiore. We had four items on our agenda. First one was the student activity request. There weren't any. Second item was bid openings. We had two bids to open. Mr. Cabral opened the bids and shared with us the appropriate paperwork that was necessary to make them a good bid. Uh, we had bids for cafeteria supplies and for grease trap maintenance. And both of those bids were referred to for, to administration for review and a future recommendation. We also had bills payable in the amount of $1,186,773. And that, uh, that passed the uh finance and law subcommittee also. Fourth item was a facilities update. On good news, the Letty Playground is in. It will be installed next week. I'm assuming once it's installed, Mr. Cabral, it'll be off limits. Uh, on a, on a sadder note, the storm we had this week, we had some damage. Some metal flashing came off of Kohan at school. We lost a tree at the high school, and there was some uh damage done to the baseball facility regarding one of the dugouts and some fencing. And also, this is not new, happens every time we have a windstorm. We lost a significant amount of shingles on uh East Taunton Elementary School. And that's being uh reviewed by the building department to see what the uh, what, what needs to be done. Uh, and that's the report of the finance and law subcommittee.
Motion, we accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the subcommittee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on a roll call vote. Mrs. Fagan.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Um, yes, and I'd like to vote present on item PO 2002286 in the amount of $65.78.
Do you want to amend, amend your, your uh thing, David?
Yes, I'll amend my motion as, include that as part of my motion that he votes present on that section, Wendy.
All right. I don't know if there's anything on there that involves mine because I didn't, I couldn't get that document up from the school department.
We didn't see anything.
I didn't see anything, Christine.
All right, I'm not gonna worry about it then. Mr. Fiore, on that motion.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
All set.
Thank you. The motion passes. Um, next is Unit A Teachers Subcommittee, Mr. Souza.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The Unit A Subcommittee met on 4/3. And that was to discuss the remote learning plan. And uh, as you see in the packet, the remote learning plan, there's a memorandum of agreement from, from the TEA. And we reviewed the memorandum of agreement with the administration and myself and Mrs. Fagan. And Mrs. Fagan made a motion to um go with the administration's recommendation and adopt the memorandum of agreement. And I seconded it, and it was a unanimous vote with me and Mrs. Fagan voting in the affirmative. And um, my recommendation to the, in, that is the, that is the Unit A Subcommittee to adopt the recommendation of this administration and the memorandum of agreement as in the packet tonight. On the remote.
Motion made to accept the report and adopt the recommendations.
Second. Oh, I can't.
Motion made, oh, who has to second that? Is that okay? Okay. Motion made, seconded on a roll call vote.
Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Present.
Uh, Mrs. Almeida?
Present.
Uh, Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
I, I lost count there. Do we have a, a majority?
You do.
Yes.
Yes.
So I have, I guess we don't need your vote, Mrs. Mayor O'Connell. That's all set?
Yes, so the motion passes. Thank you.
Um, I, I'll question the, uh, uh, just, uh, there was three presents or four presents?
Three.
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 He just wanted to make sure that we were still good. We could add Madam Mayor in if we needed. Thank, thank you. Uh, I, I have one more thing under Unit A outside of that, uh, outside of the uh report of the subcommittee. And that is um, at the last meeting, the committee as a, as a body voted to um of, to authorize the superintendent to cancel the vacation week. So we have a memorandum of agreement that's in the packet, cancel the uh vacation week, and the teachers have agreed to it. And um, the MASC has recommended that any memorandum of agreement during the virtual uh meetings be uh voted on by the whole body, even though the subcommittee and I'm authorized already to sign it. I'd like to just have a, a vote of the committee that we move forward with the authorization uh to the chairman to sign it. Uh, memorandum of agreement to the, to the TEA uh in the Unit A uh Subcommittee of the School Committee on the, on the vacation week.
So are you making the motion or do you need a motion?
Uh, I'll make the mo, I can make the motion, uh, I can make the motion because I'm not the chair at the time. So I'll ma, I'll motion that we authorize the chairman of Unit A to assign the memorandum of agreement between the uh Taunton School Committee and the TEA on canceling vacation week.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded on a roll call vote.
Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And Mayor O'Connell, if we need you, if you wanted to give a vote on this?
Well, I think it's uh, you only had two presents, right?
Three. Was that three?
No, two.
Two, okay.
So we're all set. Okay, great. Motion passed.
For the intelligence, Madam Mayor, I'm all.
How long, how long it protracted out this might be? Has anybody given thought about how we're gonna catch kids up to where they're supposed to be? Or if there's a, a plan in place to do that? I, I understand there's some parents talking about maybe their children should repeat the grade. I, I don't, I don't know if you.
We'll look at what we do as far as our summer programs. And obviously, we'll take a look at next year. And if there are individual cases where parents feel like students need to be retained, that's something that we can, we can buy for a teacher. So, no, I, I'm hopeful and I believe that the plan we put in place will minimize that effect.
They're at a number of times about doing different programs and so forth, and I don't add uh programs that you hadn't minded Taunton Nursing Home and not redo Taunton Nursing Home because for, for programming.
If that's something the committee would wish for me to entertain or to look into, Mrs. Moynihan and I can.
I, I think that if Mr. Cabral looks into it, it would become part of that broader discussion of the committee about an education facility. I think that the nursing home was chosen because it's there, it belongs to the city, and because it's in close proximity to an elementary and a middle school as well. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. You're welcome, Mrs. Almeida.
Thank you. The reason why I brought it in up tonight was that there may be possibilities that people would be looking for that facility for, for other things. And I thought that seeing it's already a school and it's in great condition, that it might be something we may want to look at as a, as a school district. And I could be wrong. I don't know. Um, but it might be something we could look at without going into the expensive converting, programming, and so forth at the nursing home that probably needs a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Cabral.
I agree with Mrs. Almeida. I think we should look at it sooner than later, just in case there are other interests out there without naming any.
Interests. Okay, so there was a motion made and seconded on a roll call vote.
Okay. Mrs. Doherty?
And the motion is to explore the buil, the building. Is that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
No.
Uh, and Mr. Souza?
Yes.
The motion passes. Okay, uh. Uh, yes, I, last night I received an email from a, a community person. It's a very simple request and assure.
Continue with our intensive cleaning as we have in the past because we want our staff out of the buildings during peak weeks. But uh, as we continue to assess, engage the buildings, uh, we will continue with our cleaning and in our sanitizing plans. And our groundskeepers continue to check on the grounds and clean our grounds as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Cabral. You're welcome. Uh, anyone else under new business? Okay, we will move on then to F, unfinished business action item updates. And there is one um action item review.
I don't, I don't see any. I've reviewed this and I'm looking at it now. I don't see any that we need to move on right now. Does anyone have any, uh, any, anything that we, that I'm missing that I, we need to move on? All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we're all set on that.
Okay, great. We will move on to G, critical items not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, uh, Mayor. Uh, I have actually two items. So first, uh, getting back to EF Tours, um, I'm still confused. Uh, Mr. Cabral or Mr. Barata mentioned uh this evening that there is an option to extend cancellation through May 15th.
On information that I received from EF Taunton. So one of the things, I'm sorry, EF Taunton, EF Tours. So I was, I was providing you with information.
Okay, so uh, then I, I'd like to set forth a motion to go back to David Gay, the attorney that represents us, Gay and Gay, to send another letter to say, thank you for the offer, $500. Refuse it by, again, a date certain, whatever date you want to put on that letter. That's the motion.
Second.
Attorney Gay is calling EF Tours tomorrow, just to let everyone.
I'm, I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
Attorney Gay is contacting EF Tours tomorrow.
And mentioning what?
To, again, he's calling them to ask why they haven't responded to his letter and to discuss receiving full refund.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Did I miss, miss something on your update? So where did the $500 come in? Was that EF's counter?
That would, no, no. So what I shared was the email that Mr. Barata sent to me with the latest offer from EF Tours to all families. The latest offer from EF Tours was they extended the cancellation deadline. And they've reduced the penalty or the amount of money they lose from $500. Attorney Gay, as I reported earlier, said that's a good start, but he's gonna call them again tomorrow. So he's advocating on, on behalf of all the families, anything back. He felt the $500 was a good start by then.
All right. So, so then, then let me move on to the next part. So they didn't actually respond to Attorney Gay's letter. This is just a general uh guideline that they're using for all members, whether it's Taunton or other school districts, correct? Okay, so they didn't respond by the April 10th deadline. So tomorrow's communication by the attorney is just to ask, where do we stand in regard to the letter of April 10th?
And to reiterate, full reimbursement.
Gotcha. So I imagine he'll get some, somebody on the phone or whatever, and we can have an update by next Wednesday's uh emergency meeting, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And the next item, um, reverting back to the acquisition of the Coyle Cassie or the exploration of.
I'm sorry, Mr. DeMello, do you then withdraw your motion?
Uh, I'm sorry. Yes, Madam Mayor, I will withdraw my motion, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so uh, back to reverting to the, my no vote on the Coyle Cassie acquisition. I understand completely where Mr. Martin was coming from and not naming anybody. But uh, we, we will have a Hopeville building that's gonna become vacant. Uh, there are other buildings that these so-called organizations can explore. Uh, the St. Mary's Building is still out there and so forth and so on, uh, if it's still available. I, I don't think that we should be getting into real estate business as, as a school department. If, especially if you don't have a plan. Uh, like, like Mrs. Doherty said, I do chair the long-range planning subcommittee on school properties and so forth. We haven't even uh actually gotten together and explored that option. So although I know it's only exploration, I remain cautious that we're not in, on, you know, in the real estate business and that acquiring more buildings, even though it could be for $1, it, it's gonna be quite an expense to maintain. That's my only thought, and I'd like to mention. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Mrs. Fagan?
Yep. Um, Mr. Cabral, back to the EF, oh, back to the EF Tours thing. Uh, would, were the parents supposed to contact the company as to say they wanted a full refund? Or are they just gonna do it for everybody and the vouchers are now off the table? Did you, I don't know if we need some clarification on that.
Attorney Gay is advocating on behalf of all the parents to get them a full refund. So I think it'd be advantageous for them to wait to see what Attorney Gay can do and then see what he recommends parents do after he's had a conversation with them. Again, I want to reiterate, I spoke with him today. He said the $500 was a good start, and he plans to call them tomorrow.
I, I understand that, Mr. Cabral. What I was wondering is, is um, if the parents personally were supposed to notify that that company or if that was all he, what he was doing right now. He's basically advocating for all the parents then.
And then he will, then he, I've known David Gay. He will make a recommendation on what parents are advising, what we should communicate to parents that they do. But it'll be their choice.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Cabral, I just have one question on that. Did the parents get that email as well? I'm sorry if I missed that, but, or was that just school administrators?
I believe, Mr. Barata, that email was sent out to all families.
This, actually, the email was sent originally to Mr. Purpra as being the tour leader, interior guide. What usually happens then, it's, from what he's told to me, it usually then goes out to the parents. Like, they get the information first, and then they push it out to all the families. So I'm assuming that information went out.
I just wonder if any of them would take advantage of it without knowing that that Mr. Gay is advocating on their behalf.
Well, I will say that um, we tracked down the nine people who did not take the survey. So they're aware of, and it was updated in terms of, as you know, that the attorney is looking at refunding all money. So they are aware this is going on. I understand the question Miss Fagan has in regards to, it's the, it's the agreement between the parents and the company. And I think they're sitting there wondering, well, wait a minute, if I cancel now, will I not seek the benefits that Mr. Gay may potentially get us or not? So that is hanging out there. So I think hearing from Mr. Gay or Attorney Gay is very pivotal. So I think hearing from Mr. Gay or Attorney Gay is very pivotal in this process.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Critical items, I think this is the end. I don't think anyone else has anything. And just to follow up on that EF Tours, just let's make sure we have a plan to, as the fluid situation continues, that the parents are notified of everything that's going on and, and so, so there's a direct line of communication. I know we, we have one, let's just make sure that, that line of vacation tightens up so parents know at all times what's going on. I appreciate that. So the last critical item is next, that's April the 22nd, Wednesday at 4:30, we'll have a, a meeting for a normal weekly, regular weekly update on COVID-19 and what's going on in the district. And if that, just wanted to let everybody know, 4:30 next Wednesday. And I appreciate everyone's help, and any questions or concerns, feel free to contact me and, and or Mr. Cabral. And thank you, everyone. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back to you.
Thank you. So H is press time, seeing none.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does that mean a roll call vote?[1786.33]